Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us. I'm going to call the meeting to order. It is now 5:30 PM. Meeting was duly posted, and we are going to begin with the invocation. Commissioner Puente, will you please lead us?
I'd like to start off with one of my favorite verses in the Bible from John 14, "The way, the truth, and the life." "Let not your heart be troubled; you believe in God, believe also in me. In my Father's house are many mansions; if it were not so, I would have told you. I go to prepare a place for you, and if I go and prepare a place for you, I will come again and receive you to myself, that where I am there you may be also, and where I go you know and the way you know." In your honor, Jesus Christ, I pray, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance. In the light of the United States of America, in the true faith of our God, in the hands of God, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
We will go to citizen communication. Amanda, do we have anyone signed up?
Okay, we have... We have Mr. Alejo Mesa, address 119 North Northwest Park Lane, and he would like to be called. Is Mr. Mesa in the audience? Would you step up to the podium?
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Alejo Mesa, 119 North Northwest Park Lane, Harlingen, Texas. And I would like to speak about our local ordinances regarding fowl and livestock. I would like to take consideration the past hardships that we've been experiencing here in Harlingen due to the pandemic and now due to inflation. And I would like to reinforce our people's way to put food on the table, you know, increase our current amount of 20 chickens or other fowl to 50 chickens if possible, and then also to remove the status of prohibited of small livestock, restrict it to go alongside with the chickens as well, with a limit of five if possible. Now, I believe this would supplement our local food sources, promote self-sufficiency, and also increase the emotional well-being of the people, being able to feel the security that we're not have to worry about higher gas prices or the cost of foods going up at HEB or other local stores. And also, this would allow for keeping up with the current times and any future issues that we might have. And I'd like to take consideration adjusting those as you see fit. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one is Robert Garcia, 902 South Palm Court Drive, and he would like to speak on municipal court update.
Can I hand these to some people?
Are you going to read all of those?
Well, this is kind of a visual.
You don't have any warrants, right?
Some people probably got warrants in here. Yeah, if you could just give these out. I gave Mr. Morales already warrants right now, but... And here, these are... I'm not going to pass these out because, you know, I didn't redact them. But I did redact those. Anyways, I'm Judge Bobby Garcia from the Harlingen Municipal Court. It's kind of ironic, I was prepared to say a little speech, and then I just got through the training today. We had it all day. And ironically, I was going to talk about bonds, and then the training is about the new Senate Bill 6, which pertains to judges' certification for setting bonds. So the new rule is no judge can set a bond unless they take this certification. And it's a long certification. I just got done with it today, but I wanted to address the issue of setting bonds. There have been many reforms that have been going on regarding the bail system. There are a lot of federal lawsuits. I attached some at the end. There's also even an incident where a lady passed away in the jail because she couldn't make her bond. And that is why those federal lawsuits are happening in Houston, San Antonio, Dallas, Galveston, and I think even Hidalgo County, but there's many more cities being sued for excessive bonds. Read all those lawsuits that I provided you. Now, these are the cases from the district attorney's office. All these cases, these are states' motions to dismiss. Now, I gave you some examples of some people in there that were charged with a crime, $75,000, $50,000 bonds, $30,000 bonds. All those cases were dismissed. These are...I've only been here two years. These are all states' motions to dismiss. Engaging in organized criminal activity, assault, family violence, endangering a child, injury to the elderly, indecency with a child. These are serious cases that the DA is dismissing. However, the judges are being critiqued about the bonds that we are setting at the municipal court. Now, I only set about 45% of the bonds, so there are four judges. And even though I am the presiding judge, the bonds that I set are set with an attorney present, a defense lawyer, and a prosecutor. And I always go by the recommendations of the defense lawyer and the prosecutor about 99% of the time. They get their affidavits for any arrest at 7:15 in the morning, then we get them and we discuss probable cause, and we discuss bonds, and then I go with the recommendations of what the attorneys are stating. Before I got here, they used to use a post-it. Now, a post-it from the judges means, "Here's a post-it, here's a police report, fix it." A judge cannot be fixing police reports. I created the form soon as I got here because I knew that was a big issue. Well, it's created enemies in the police department because they don't like to be told what to do. When you're used to not having a single police report rejected, you're going to create enemies. When you're setting PR bonds, you're going to create enemies with the bond companies. Now, the DA is problematic because they should not be communicating with the city manager. That is against bar rules. I'm done. If you want to ask me any more questions, I don't know how it works, but I just...I did send some emails, but I wanted to red flag some of these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. I do have a question on here, and I apologize if I didn't catch it initially. You said you just completed a training?
Yes. The judges, Senate Bill 6 requires that any judge that is setting bonds must go through the 16-hour training. And we went through the...we had this brought up. It was in April 1st it was implemented, and this was the date that the training was set. So no judge can set a bond unless they've received that training. And yeah, it was a very long training. So it's kind of a weird time to be changing judges, but, I mean, I understand. You know, I know bond companies are probably upset, police officers don't want to be told that their police reports...
Excuse me.
Okay.
This is public comment, and I just advise the city commission not to respond at all. The judge is making...giving this as a public comment, and we can have a discussion in a different forum if he wants to talk about some of these issues.
Yes, that's exactly right. I just wanted to make sure I understood on the training part, but thank you for bringing this to our attention.
I would just like to say one thing. The attorneys that have been working at the prosecutors are great. I love them. I love working with them. They've been really good. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, the next person is Jerry Preppashaw, who would like to be called...oh, is he here? No. Would like to be called during the meeting? No. I guess his comments was, "I would like to concentrate on the allocation of funding from CDBG." He doesn't want to be called, and I don't think he's present, so I just read his comment.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am. The next one is Ron Lozano, 2410 Riverside Drive, and would like to speak on item number five.
Well, actually, I had a discussion with the proponent of that.
Can we just state your name and address again, please?
Again? That's the same as what you just said. Ron Lozano, 2410 Riverside Drive.
Thank you.
I totally disagree with the alert you just got from the city attorney. He cannot find any basis in Texas law for what he just stated. And that is unbecoming for America because last night we had an election at the federal level, in some parts of the state at the state level, and of course here municipal level. And elections have consequences. So one of the items on some of this rapid fire, as Judge Garcia just mentioned, consent agenda talks to the airport board. One of the proposals is if someone has ever been removed from a board, when we had in-depth discussions, sometimes Mayor Boswell and I could reach an accord. And some of the pernicious effect of that ridiculous proposal, because it discounts the judges' function, an appellate function of America, somebody could be exonerated, but in Harlingen, if a vindictive individual has removed you from a board, that automatically given the current proposal, and you put it on consent agenda of all places, totally un-American. And that's why some of the candidacies that we have, people that are running are so dismal because we come up with proposals as ridiculous as that one. So hopefully you all can address that and realize that it's going to be constitutionally challenged. You cannot dismiss our appellate system so easily. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Desi Martinez.
Desi Martinez, 1806 Hartford Boulevard. Council members, I'm here because there's an urgent need for responsible action in our community and its children, K to 12, to regain the confidence of safe schools and neighborhoods. That is the priority today. I'm talking about, and all respect to the advisory committee of CDBG, CDBG funds come from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development to assist with this type of urban We cannot wait another year. It needs to start this summer. This is your first budget you're going to work on in detail for your whole budget of your $100 million, more or less you're going to have. So I'd like to ask that you please consider not lights for Victor Park, for Victor Park, what is it called, football, et cetera, but for CDBG revaluation and safety around schools and neighborhoods. The city is responsible for the sidewalk into the neighborhoods. The CDBG funds makes it eligible for the low-income areas that funds are targeted in there. Your police department knows what the conditions of those areas of illicit activities, et cetera. But to work together with the city, 911, and the schools, et cetera, and AAP, for example, put monitoring cameras on AAP poles and monitor those, and 911, and the police department can work a day and night program. But the thing is, those are just one example. Cleaning alleys where the public works, we got to come together. The CDBG offered today is a standard business-as-usual program that they've been doing, and that they ask the departments, and they bring in their Christmas list, y vamos a trabajar. That's not the way we do these things with CDBG. Being a former director of CDBG for Metro City, I know. So please consider that item, the $234,000, be relocated to neighborhood revaluation and school safety. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We have the last one, is Raymond Reyes. Is he in the audience?
Raymond Reyes, 706 Nantucket Drive in Harlingen. So I think there's a lot of issues that need to be addressed, like always. It's always a work in progress, like I always say, but hopefully everybody can get on the same page and work towards making a positive change for Harlingen and more importantly for the citizens. There's a lot of different ways that things can be addressed and taken care of. Not everybody's going to agree, but if we've tried certain methods and they haven't worked, then you're going to want to try other methods. Again, it's always a work in progress. School safety, like the gentleman mentioned, is a big deal. I myself, as an analyst and the kind of work that I do, have looked at things that have actually worked in other countries. And I always go back to Israel, that's surrounded by all these terrorists and things, but yet you never hear school shootings and things of that nature. Maybe that could be something that can look at and maybe, you know, considered implementation on some aspects. But I think more importantly as well, there needs to be oversight of all the directors or people in charge of all these departments to make sure everything's running as efficiently as possible. Certain things have been brought to light to myself that hopefully are getting addressed and resolved, and all we just need to pay is attention to detail like there was constantly drilled in me in the military. So I think Harlingen's got a very bright future. There's a lot of innovation that hopefully is going to be coming to Harlingen very soon with a lot of positive changes, including I'm so glad that Reo Fest is coming back. That's something I've been harping on for a long time, but I think as long as we keep making progress in the right direction, good things will come. It just takes time, but to constantly keep moving forward in a positive light. Thank you very much, Mayor, city commissioners, for your time. That's it, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Mr. Reyes, and your comments.
I have no more citizens' communication.
Great. Okay, so we'll go on to item number one, presentation of recognition awards. And the first one is the Harlingen High School South Lady Hawks Track Team. You can come on up. Do you want to come up here, Commissioner Perez? I feel really honored to be around these beautiful ladies. So this is a recognition award from the City of Harlingen congratulating the Harlingen High School South Lady Hawks District 6A Track and Field Champions. We have all the athletes listed here, so many, I think I'm going to have to pass one on that, but they're all listed here. The girls' head coach is Coach Foster.
I'm Coach Schumacher.
Okay, so with that, Coach Schumacher. And for your spirit and dedication and your outstanding accomplishments, I wanted to present this award to all of you. So, Coach. Yay!
I know you guys have already been, you know, at school, you know. Most of you, I don't think I've had any of you yet at school in my class yet right now.
Lucky you!
So you guys are with us anyway. Sophomores, junior seniors, you'll have me next year, this coming, that's what I have. But I know you've gotten a lot of applause at school, and I know there's a superintendent, but I wanted the city to congratulate you guys because we're getting a district championship. I know that's a lot of hard work, and you guys have to be recognized for the hard work that you do. So congratulations.
Here we go, in three, two, one, again. One more time. Thank you. Sorry. Don't move. And next, we have the Harlingen North Lady Cardinals Soccer Team.
No, this is attractive.
Yeah, we got it. So just so everyone knows, it's Harlingen High School, not Harlingen North. Okay, so this recognition award goes to the City of Harlingen congratulates the Harlingen North... We have to correct this. I think we're going to correct it. The Harlingen Lady Cardinals Soccer Team, 2021 to 2022, and it has all of the wonderful ladies on here as well, back-to-back district and by-district champions, area finalists. The Lady Cardinals Soccer head coach, Deborah Galvane, Coach Jimenez, is here to accept this recognition, recognition of your dedication and determination to reach exceptional results. And so we do present this award to you. We are very, very proud of you, and we are going to correct it to say Harlingen High School because I know that it's a big deal. So any Cardinal will tell you that. So nothing wrong with South, but...
Yeah, there is.
He's the one that did the fight. He's the one that did the fight.
We're going to blame Commissioner Perez. He doesn't know, he doesn't believe it. All right, here we go. You want it here? Three, two, one. There we go. The Harlingen High School South Hawks varsity boys basketball team. It's my honor to present you with this recognition award. The City of Harlingen congratulates the Harlingen South Hawks varsity boys basketball 21-22 team for an exceptional season and outstanding accomplishments, 24-21 state playoff appearances, by-district champions, and area finalists. Head coach Brian Molina, first assistant Armando Perez, and assistant coaches Frank Assam, Steven Garcia, Albert Alvarez, Izvoni Lee, and Roel Vucetis for your dedication and commitment to student athletes, presented on this Thursday, February 22nd, 2022.
I'll have to stand in front.
Here we go. Three, two, one. Perfect. Sorry. Got him. Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Congrats. That's it?
You want mine? No. That's good.
See you, Leo. Anything else from South?
Hey, that was good representation of both. Okay, so item number two is approval of minutes. This is the regular city commission minutes of April 6, 2022. Are there any changes or addition to the minutes? Do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have item number three, the consent agenda. We have items 3A through E.
Mayor, if I may at this time, can I remove item 3E just for discussion, to ask a couple of questions?
Okay.
Which one's this?
The last one.
Oh. That was yours, yes.
And it's yours? What's that?
Well, it has something to do with the...
Okay. So do you need to do a motion to move to remove, to move that out of the consent agenda?
We just...what we'll do, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, 3A through 3D.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And so, is anyone here from Public Works?
Craig is going to address any issues.
I'll pinch it. Craig Cook, Assistant City Manager.
Just a real quick question. I had discussed with Mr. Rodriguez, and section four, the last sentence, it still shows the language. The last sentence says, "No two-axle trailers will be allowed." Were we supposed to strike that? Has that been taken out?
It has, and there's the two fees of $95, I believe, for double-axle trailers.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure because on here, it doesn't show that it's been removed, so that's all I...that's the only concern I have.
I remember seeing it in a version I saw, so I'll confirm that.
Pass the motion with the understanding of the language?
Yeah. We'll take that language out.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and just approve consent agenda, item number 3E.
I have a question.
Yes.
There we go. Okay. I have a question for the lawyer. This affects Mr. Puente's roofing business, and he spoke about that specifically in And he spoke about that specifically in the last meeting, and he's speaking on it now. Is that a conflict of interest?
No, he, has Mr. Pointe recused himself? Has Commissioner Pointe recused himself?
No, he's here.
No, but, uh, no, it's not a conflict of interest.
Okay. This is an ordinance that was placed even before I was on the commission. And I not only speak on behalf of my company, but this was more geared towards the local businesses that were gonna be affected by this. And so, obviously, that's why I had brought it up, so, there's, there is no conflict of interest. It's actually, it's gonna cost me more, but we just wanted to make sure that we were being fair to all other contractors, especially the ones who live here in Harlingen, that they weren't gonna be, uh, punished, so to speak, so.
Is there any other discussion or any other questions? No, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No, we need to make a motion.
You, um, do we have a second? We did have the motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have item number four, consideration and possible action for the City of Harlingen to have a booth at the Texas Municipal League Conference during the week of October five, twenty twenty-two, in San Antonio, Texas.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for having me here tonight. The City of Harlingen has had a booth at the Texas Municipal League Conference. This year is being held in San Antonio for the past six years. During this conference, we give out promotional information on the City of Harlingen to around three thousand attendees. Some of those are including the people that are exhibitors at the booth themselves, that they have an exhibit. And, um, we do have a booth already purchased for this twenty twenty-two conference, and, uh, we paid twelve hundred dollars for the booth. So, um, a lot of the city administration attend, all the elected officials attend, and various department heads attend to go to the conference during this week.
I have a, a few questions.
Yes, ma'am.
You said for the last six years?
Yes.
We didn't have a booth there in twenty twenty-one because TML was canceled.
Twenty, yes, I'm sorry, it was canceled. We were supposed to go to the Gaylord Texan, we had already purchased a booth as well, but it was canceled during that, during the pandemic.
And have there been any other cities represented?
No, ma'am, we are the only city administration, or city that's represented. Most of the booths that are at the event are like street sweepers, if you wanted to buy one, factors, you can get lights, you can get Christmas decorations. So, if you ever wanted to build a city, that's where you would go get everything.
Okay. And, um, I noticed on here that, um, on the summary, that the promotional items that are handed out at the event are a total of five thousand dollars?
Yes, well, we purchased that amount, amount of promotional items that we hand out during the year. For any, anybody in the city, basically, that hands out promotional items, we provide that for any department that would require them. But we take them to the conference to hand out. We don't hand out all five thousand dollars worth, like I said, some of it comes back to, to the city itself. But we do hand out a large portion of it, along with literature, like brochures of all our attractions and our brochures. That includes printing of those brochures, et cetera.
And this is in San Antonio?
Yes, ma'am, every, uh, year it changes in ci, a city throughout the state of Texas.
Yeah, now, there aren't any cities in South Texas that are represented, but there are cities throughout the state of Texas that do have a booth there. Uh, I think Bassdrop has had one in the past. There is a port city that has had one. So, there are some cities that do attend, but none from South Texas.
Okay.
Mayor, I had a question. Uh, on that same summary, it shows here that they are, I guess the promotional items are shipped costing us two thousand dollars, is there?
Well, it just, it depends on the weight of the product that we're sending, so if we're sending, like, the red notebooks that you have seen, if we're sending, like, ten boxes of that, they charge us to send those boxes to San Antonio, and anything that we have left over would be mailed back. That is an approximation amount, because depending on the, the length of, or how far the conference is. When it's in Dallas, of course, it's gonna cost us maybe the two thousand dollars. If it's in San Antonio, it's gonna cost us closer to a thousand dollars. So, the, that, that range, price range does change a little bit, depending on where the conference is.
Why wouldn't we use, like, our trucks and our employees?
Our employees, um, anybody that goes to the event, they take their own personal vehicle, or they rent a vehicle, um, to go to the event, but they're, the conference itself has a company that we ship it through. And they bring, excuse me?
But Public Works has brand-new trucks that, that?
No, I, yes, sir, I understand that, the, the amount of boxes.
Commissioner, if I could just interject, if you take your own vehicle and drop it off, they only give you fifteen minutes to offload, and then you've gotta take it inside. If you use this company, they'll actually put it in front of your booth, um, and then you just take it off and put it on your table, so it's a lot easier.
So, if we?
Because I was gonna do that one time using my van, and when I found that out, I said, no.
There's, um, if we take around twenty boxes of promotional items, my department is myself and another coworker. So, we would have to get to the loading dock at a certain time, have fifteen minutes to unload fifteen to twenty boxes that probably weigh thirty pounds, take them to our booth in a exhibit hall that holds around, uh, three hundred eighty-five exhibitors. So, you could be at one end of the football field or the other, and then you have to rush back and move your car. So, for us and the exact personnel that manned the booth, it's not an availability.
So, the fee may be less.
The fee, it, it will be less if we choose, uh, to send less items.
Okay, thanks.
So, um, a question that I have is, this is, this conference is not open to the public, right?
Uh, yes, you can sign up, you can attend, the public can attend, uh, they do, the conference is two parts. There is classes for people that are elected officials and city administrations and department heads, and there's also an exhibit hall that's open to the public. They do have to purchase a, um, a day pass for the exhibit hall, and they're able to go in.
Okay. How does, uh, how does this, because it's mainly for, I mean, I'm looking at, at what you submitted, it's mainly for elected officials or appointed officials in government bodies. How does, I'm trying to understand how City of Harlingen, being there promotes tourism, can you get me there?
So, for the past five years, like I've said, we, we go and it really is about connecting with all the elected officials and the city governments, local city governments that are, that attend the event. The more information that we can give them, they can, can, like, fill through to their constituents as well. So, I do, uh, sometimes a tour for the, um, the travel and tourism centers. So, all the travel and tourism centers around the state, they go to each one, and they learn about each travel and tourism information. The more information I give them, the more than they can give to others. This is basically what we, is another way to get to people's, informations directly to people that are elected officials in cities around the state of Texas. So, that is where we had come in through the City of Harlingen.
Can you share some of the connections you've made and how that's benefited the city?
Uh, the most connections that we've made throughout the city is, like I said, just through elected officials, that we're giving them information of what we have to offer in the city, what attractions we have, what flights we have, and how, why they come down.
My question more specifically, like, you're saying, you're, you're promoting, you're promoting the city. Now, has any of those, you know, booked at the convention center?
Yeah, I don't, I do not have a direct return, no, sir. No, sir. Are there? Besides just informing all the three thousand attendees about the city, yes, no, I do not have any concrete evidence that somebody came down to Harlingen from that.
And I have a question, the money that you spent on this, could it, say, for example, we were to say no, um, because this money could, because, like, I was seeing what you were posting about, like, how much it was gonna cost and stuff. And it ranged, again, I know, now you said that's the five thousand dollars promotional, some of it is for throughout the year and stuff.
Yes.
But, um, could some of that money, instead of spending it on going to the, um, opening a booth there, could we use that more to, like, say, opening up a festival? Because I think you do a great job, like, you had the Blues on the Hill.
Yes, sir.
You did a fantastic job, and I, and honestly, me personally, I would like to see more of that, because I think that has more of a direct impact on the people of Harlingen than us having a booth. Because I was checking the listings online, um, for the, you can look online, and it'll, and it'll give you all the, um, exhibitors from last year. And then I was looking through every single one of them, and the City of Harlingen was the only one that had, that exhibited last year. And I just think that we could use this money better to, say, have another festival for, say, because we have the Blues on the Hill, maybe, uh, you know, Country on the Hill, or Tejano, or seventies and eighties, or something like that, because I, I think that really is something that, I mean, when I was there, and, 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 you know, I was, you were there too, and, and I could tell that the people really enjoy that, and I think that's what people in Harlingen want, they want more activities that they can go to. So, I think that the money would be better spent on, you know, promoting something and letting you do your magic when you do these things, like the Freedom Fest and, uh, and the Blues on the Hill.
We can do that, we can do that.
Yeah, I can, I can do another concert, especially Blues on the Hill, they're fairly simple for us to put together, so.
Like, I have a question, like, say, like, Blues on the Hill, like, how much was that, more or less?
This past one was eight thousand dollars.
Okay, so, like, more or less, like, the money we spent?
The most money is spent on the artist.
Okay, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do you wanna make that a motion?
That, that, that would be, that would be great, because that would bring people into the City of Harlingen, if we have a, a band that is popular amongst people to come and, you know, stay at the hotels and, and hopefully eat and shop and all that good stuff.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, we do, like I said, we already purchased the booth, uh, it's twelve hundred dollars, we can get fifty percent back if we cancel before July eighth, so we made the deadline for that.
Okay.
To me, that's fine, we're not, we're not gonna pay you for the, uh, your hotel stay, the per diem, and everything else, so, losing six hundred bucks, no biggie. Because you'll reinvest it in the direct impact.
Yes, sir.
Well, the, the director still go, like, I'm assuming you're still gonna go to?
Yeah, I could still go to the, the conference.
Yeah, my thing was just the, um.
She wouldn't need to take all the staff, though.
Yeah, exactly, my thing was just the booth, because I wanna spend that more on stuff for us.
Right, we, we, that, that's kind of, that's how I feel as well, I just wanna make sure that you, we don't, we're not giving all our promotional items to other elected officials from other cities that are probably gonna just toss them, and they're not going to promote us, we'd rather give that to people that, you know, want to.
I wanna, I wanna see kids in my high school with the City of Harlingen hat.
I did order some new ones, so they should be coming in.
And, and I, and I did hear that there is gonna be some kind of, um, mountain bike type race that's coming to, to Harlingen?
Uh, there, the mountain bike, uh, track that is being built right now, they are trying to build a, I, I guess it's, it is a race, or maybe it's just like a?
I think there's a ra, and I think that is, you know, a way maybe those, we could utilize those.
Those funds to that, I can, I can, um.
We, we can, as, as long as we can attract people into our hotels, we can spend it on, on that.
Right, because the closest one, I think, for that would be San Antonio, and we can, we can talk much later. We, we, you know, welcome that, we are happy that you wanna come, but I don't think that, um, at least, I think that's how we feel, that the, the promotional items aren't really necessary, nor the, nor the booth in this particular conference.
In this conference, no, I understand, and it, that's why we bring that to you guys.
Thank you.
We need a motion. So, make a motion to deny?
So, a motion to approve and then you oppose?
Yeah. Oh, say it again, I'm sorry, I'm deaf.
So, is there a motion to?
Oh, motion.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
A motion.
For what?
What was the motion?
To approve this?
We're making motion to deny a booth at the, at the TML conference.
Okay.
So, it's, so it's a motion to, to deny?
Motion to deny.
No. It's a motion to approve, but we deny it by saying, voting no. Yeah, that way they can use it for something else.
Mark?
Motion, you're, you were moving to deny, you can qualify it, but you're moving to deny the booth.
Right, so, move, motion to deny.
Motion to deny the booth at TML.
Second.
All those in favor of denying the motion?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five, consideration and possible action to adopt a new ordinance, section forty-six dash one-six-seven to chapter forty-six, article four of the Code of Ordinances to prohibit stopping, standing, or parking of a vehicle to improve public safety, consistent with Texas Transportation Code, section five forty-five point three zero-two. Mr. Cook?
Craig Cook, Assistant City Manager, I'll field any questions you have.
Um, you wanna explain exactly what this, this will do, Craig? This is actually gonna, uh, enforce some of the yellow lines that we've already painted along.
In the past, that, that's right, sir, in, in the past, the commission has approved specific, uh, no parking areas, uh, along streets, uh, at corners and such. Uh, this is an attempt to kind of collect all of that and give some authority, some weight, to the yellow painted curves that you see around town that signify no parking. There was a citizen in District Five that complained about, uh, parking around South High School, not on the property, but around it, on, uh, Haverford, and I've provided some pictures. That particular street has a carve-out for parking on one side of the street, and people were parking in the, within the carve-out, but they were also parking outside of it, congesting the traffic lanes. And so, we would paint those outer areas yellow. Uh, there's other pictures where they're parked right at the stop sign, or a yield sign specifically, uh, we would paint those areas too. So, this, the first, the first intent is to get us in accordance with the Transportation Code. Most of us know you can't park in front of a fire hydrant, but we, we need to codify that, um, and then these specific areas in and around South High.
This is something that I asked Craig to look into, because I did, like Craig mentioned, I did have a, a resident from my district that reached out to me, because, and I see it every day, because I, I work at South, and I go, and we have students that, you know, they bring their cars, and they, they don't wanna park on, on school property, because they have to have insurance, and they have to pay, get a permit and all that, so what they do is they park on the sides, and, and they, basically, it's, it's bad.
So, so, but, hold on, let me, let me ask you a question.
What's up?
Because you worked there, is the school charging a permit for the kids to, to park?
You know what, that's a good question.
And, and, and?
I get mine free, so I don't know.
I'm sorry?
I was like, I get mine free, so I, I don't know, I don't know.
The point is, is if they have a specific, uh, parking area, then the school also needs to enforce, uh, that, that they park on, on, on property.
Oh, no, like, in, inside, I mean, they can, they, 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 um, regulate the, the parking inside the school grounds on school property, but they don't have any authority to say, hey, you can't park on, on the side of the public street or anything like that.
What I've seen, like, at North, right?
Again, remember, that's North.
Yes, at North, they, 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 oh, parking lot, they don't, they don't use parking. I mean, they, they actually cut it off, and the parking lot that was supposed to be for, for kids is now used either for the band or for some of their function, right? Uh, so, uh, we need to, I, I think, I would ask the city to find out.
We can, we can.
Are they using other allotted parking spaces, or is your parking lot, uh, have, is it being repurposed, causing that kind of congestion? Because it may, it may be the fact that they don't wanna buy a permit, but also maybe there's no parking, that's not, that's not kids on campus.
I know for South, at least, they do have student parking, and students are allowed to park there, and stuff, but like, you have to remember, at the same time, there's tons and tons of students, so, and not everyone, there's not gonna be enough room for all the cars, because I know they?
But is, but is South, the question is, is South using, all of, the way it was constructed, it was designed, all their asphalt, is it being used for parking, or are they repurposing it?
From what I've seen, um, yes, it's all being used for parking, either staff parking, or bus parking, or student parking, yes. And then the only time they really do the kind of functions you're saying, like for band and stuff like that, is either real early in the morning, or real late, like after, you know, after hours.
And, and I will say, I do intend to go speak with someone at the school this summer, uh, before we start painting, uh, curves, so that they know what that means, uh, so that next fall, everybody will know, you know, fair, fair notice.
And this also covers other important stuff, right, like the, um, in front of, parking in front of a private driveway?
Yes, yes.
Intersections.
Intersections, yield signs, stop signs, the, the things that you kind of intuitively know, but, but we wanna make it more clear.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number six, uh, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for rezoning request from residential, single-family district to general retail district for thirty point twenty-eight acres out of a portion of block twelve, Stewart Place subdivision, thirty-one, thirty-nine, all of block seven, and a portion of block eight, some village subdivision located along the north side of U.S. Expressway eighty-three, between Glanville and Alta's Palmas Road. Applicant is, uh, Mariana Garcia, chair of Natasha Benfadio.
Mayor City Commission, good evening. Uh, this, uh, project was discussed, discussed briefly two weeks ago, there was an abandonment of a right-of-way easement over here, that was approved. And now, what's coming before you is the rezoning of the property, uh, most of the property from single-family residential to general retail district to allow this, uh, large commercial project to happen. This is along the, along the north side of the Expressway eighty-three, between Alta's Palmas Road, Alta's Palmas Road over here, and Tam Lane over here. This is along the, along the north side of the Expressway eighty-three, between Atlas Palmas Road, Atlas Palmas Road over here, and Tam Lane over here. So the, the project covers this whole area for this large commercial development, uh, in the works. Part of the property is already its own general retail district along the Frontis Road and here, but a, a large portion is owned, single-family on Atlas Palmas, and then a big section, uh, on next east of Tam Lane, that is part of this big project. This is the aerial photograph of, of the property. Uh, I think a lo, a loire used to be located here. There are some warehouses that are located on, on Expressway that have been abandoned. All of these buildings are now abandoned too, uh, because the, this developer purchased this entire property for this project. And that's a picture of the project, of the property from Tam Lane, looking east, and that's, uh, looking on Tam Lane, looking north. In the comprehensive plan, it calls for the entire property as a employment, uh, generator, as an employment center, so this, uh, zoning is in line with the comprehensive plan. Uh, we did receive a petition, a petition in opposition. I believe a copy of the petition was placed in your, in your space, uh, from property owners in the Los Arboles Estates, uh, Phase Two subdivision. Uh, their concern is that their property taxes, uh, could go up, and then traffic along Tam Lane, uh, traffic concerns. Ten people signed a petition. And this map, all the petitioners are from the, from this subdivision, which is Los Arboles Estates Phase Two. Some, some of the petitioners from the notification area, and then some from outside the notification area, and so the petitioners make up three percent of the total notification area. So that's the calculation that shows that it's three percent of the total, uh, notification area.
So, when I was reviewing before, it indicated that there had not been any objections, and did you just receive this?
Because, uh, the petition was submitted, but no one showed up to the public hearing. So that's, uh, that's why I'm, I'm reporting that, uh, the Planning and Standing Commission public hearing, uh, nobody showed up in opposition. Uh, but we did get the petition. That, that's something that you can, uh, consider.
I did reach out to, because this is in my district, so, um, I had, one of my constituents reached out to me, and I did speak to them, and I called, um, Javier earlier today, because their main concern is their, is the, the taxes. They, they were under the, uh, the assumption that if it, if it switched over to general retail, that their property taxes would automatically go up. And then after I reached out to, um, to Javier, and, and, you know, he, he did a great job and explained to me about, oh, how that just allows, you know, the development to, to get built there, and that won't really have an effect on the, on the taxes, unless, you know, the construction, but from what I understand, he told me it's gonna be, uh, car dealership, correct?
Correct.
It's gonna be a car dealership that's built there, so, um, in other words, that, that taxes is not really an issue unless some of the homes start selling for a higher price and stuff like that. And I spoke to the constituent, and they understood, um, they were just under the impression that by changing it, the zoning, that their taxes were automatically gonna go up. And once I explained to them that that's not the case, um, they, they were fine with it, because, well, you know, the main thing was the taxes. So, I'm good with it.
I need a, I need to make sure that I understand this. What's the difference between the high-density residential and the low-density residential, which is where this came from? Where the, uh, Los Arboles. My, what, my, specifically, are they in a flooding zone, or will they be flooded, because we're gonna, uh, do a car dealership, and water's gonna run to the lowest place, and they're gonna get hurt?
They have to go through the, after they get the zoning, if the zoning goes through, they have to go through the subdivision process, and they will have to comply with the fifty-year, uh, storm detention, so that's your, the new guide was adopted a few, a few months ago. To change it from a twenty-five-year storm to a fifty-year storm, so this development will have to comply with the fifty-year storm.
Is it actually gonna help that neighborhood?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they'll have to have some sort of, of retention built into that.
And it's owned for commercial already, the vast majority?
Part of the property is already its own general retail district, uh, but in the comprehensive plan, it calls for employment center, and this is gonna be a, an employment generator. Uh, so it's right in line with the comprehensive plan.
Make the motion for approval.
Second. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Sevantes. Now we'll move to the, uh, public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against the adoption of this ordinance? Anyone who's here, we'll move on to the consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a rezoning request for residential, single-family district to general retail district for thirty point twenty-eight acres out of a portion of block twelve Stewart Place subdivision, survey one thirty-nine, all of block seven, and a portion of block eight Sun Village subdivision located along the north side of the U.S. Expressway eighty-three between Ham Lane and Atlas Palmas Road.
Do I need to say that again?
No, uh, ma'am, but, uh, mayor, but the city attorney would read the caption at this point.
So that's why the mic was off. It's six B.
Sixteen?
Six B.
Yeah, I know, my, my book is a little mustered. An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen, rezoning from residential, single-family R-one district to general retail GR district for a property located along the north side of U.S. Expressway eighty-three, between Tam Lane and Atlas Palmas Road, with a legal description of thirty point two eight acres out of a portion of block twelve Stewart Place subdivision, survey one thirty-nine, all of block seven, and a portion of block eight Sun Village subdivision.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, public hearing to consider an ordinance on for, on first reading for a rezoning request from general retail district to planned development district for residential and multifamily use purposes for twenty-five point thirty-three acres out of land comprised of ten acres out of lot nine, nine point nine nine acres out of lot ten, two point six seven acres out of lot fifteen, and two point six seven acres out of lot sixteen, block one forty-six, San Benito Land and Water Company subdivision located on the northeast corner of Hayne Drive and Wayland Road. Applicant is Armando Elizarde.
Yes, so this is a proposed, uh, new residential development along the north side of Hayne Road, between Wayland and FM five oh nine. That's the property that we're looking at. It's currently its own general retail district. They're proposing a mix of residential uses. That's the aerial photograph of the property. And then you have Phase One was approved two years ago, and it's almost complete, and so now they're proposing Phase Two, uh, to the east. This shows the layout of the proposed subdivisions. Uh, Phase One, like I said, is almost complete, is almost ready for recording. So Phase Two, they're, they're proposing to extend Golden Bear from Treasure Hills Boulevard to Hayne. So this project, uh, generates, uh, causes regional benefits, because people that live in Treasure Hills will be able to use Golden Bear to connect to Hayne and to FM five oh nine, and vice versa. So this project has regional, uh, benefits to the community, uh, so then you have also better connectivity to Phase One. The street of Phase One will connect to the street of Phase Two, so it's, it's gonna have nice circulation of, uh, of road, uh, connectivity of roadways. This is a proposed, uh, multifamily development, and then the rest is single-family homes. And this is, uh, more details. This is a Hayne Boulevard. They proposed a multifamily development. The rest is single-family homes. Detention areas on the west side, here and here, the, the proposed, uh, onsite detention.
Are they following the ten-year, or are they following the new, the new standards?
This, this subdivision application came in before the new guide was adopted, so this will be twenty-five year.
Twenty-five year?
Yeah.
And is the developer here?
Yes.
Okay, can we speak to him?
Yes, uh, yes, you can.
That's gonna be a problem. Um, Gabe, how much money has, has Adams Crossing South cost the city, because we didn't follow the district regulations? Has it passed five hundred thousand dollars yet?
Well, um, it, it has cost of staff time going out there to actually have backer trucks, uh, help with the, uh, the drainage that's there, uh, trying to get that cleared out. Uh, we haven't tracked that, but, uh, it has cost of staff time.
No, but, but the last figures I saw was, it was, it was nearing half a million dollars of the city's money.
So, is there a way that we can put it, where they can, um, have to abide by the fifty-year instead of the twenty-five year?
Uh, that could be a condition of the PD district. I believe so.
About the what? I'm sorry.
Because right now, you have a, you have a PD district going before you, right? So that can be a, a condition of the PD district.
Conditioned upon.
Condition on, on the new drainage requirements.
Okay.
Wait, wait, I have a question. You asked about Adams Crossing. Is this Adams Crossing?
No.
No, same developer.
Is it the same, um?
Yes, he was following the same restrictions.
Is it the same elevation at the same location, or is this across town?
It's worse.
How is it worse?
Because it's, it's on the Treasure Hills. That, that whole, that's all flat. That's all, that's a word, that's.
There, there's no place else in Harlingen that's flat?
You're asking me a question, I'm answering you.
Yeah, you said that it's different, this is different, because that property is flat.
Developer using same guidelines, which, in my, my thing, it's, it's cutting the, the corners of responsible development.
Oh, so you're calling them irresponsible developers?
I think, I think that we're, the city passed stricter requirements to, uh, improve the drainage, right? The, the detention time, so that we don't have flooding coming. Every rainfall that we get right now, even currently, even a rainfall, not a hurricane, just a rainy event, Adams Crossing South floods.
And what does that have to do with this property?
Those are three hundred thousand other homes that are getting water in their houses.
But what does that have to do with this property?
It's the same developer.
And so, are you saying the same developer put flooding into Adams Crossing, and they're gonna put flooding into this one?
We did not require him to, to, uh, stricter standards for, for building.
Were you a commissioner then?
Yeah, and I, and I voted against it.
Oh, you did?
I did.
Okay. So what does Adams Crossing have to do with this I'm missing? The, the only connection is, is the, is the developer.
No, 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 it's development, period.
Ah, so you don't want any development?
I want responsible development.
Define responsible development.
Following the best practices that we can.
Define best practices.
We just implemented them.
What are they?
Let's, let's stay, let's stay focused on.
I am focused.
On what we have here, and I understand Commissioner Mesmer and, and Commissioner Uribe, but I think before us, it doesn't, you know, who the developer is, it, it, it doesn't matter who the developer is.
Well, it matters a whole lot to Uribe.
Right, but I think what before us is, is, is this subdivision, and I think that Commissioner Bettes brought up a good point, that we've changed our standards, and maybe we need to move to ensuring that all developers are, are meeting these standards, regardless of, of who the developer is.
I have a question of our attorney.
Well, I think in this.
This is an ex post facto, isn't it?
No, and the reason why, Commissioner, I understand what you're saying, because we've got issues about whether they apply to this standard or previous standard.
Right.
But in this case, you're seeking to impose a new planned development district, which can impose its own unique standards on that area.
So they're not grandfathered in?
So as a condition of granting a planned development district, and I don't know what the compromises are, I don't know whether it's, you're going for density, I, I don't know why it was necessary to have a planned development district as opposed to a regular, but as a condition for that, you can ask that stricter drainage, this, the, the new drainage standards be followed, if you, because you are going for that planned development district.
So I'll make that motion.
We have a, a public.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Sevantes. Now we're gonna open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against?
Yes, Ron Lozano, since we have Mr. Sevantes here, and the ex post facto factor that he just brought up, when you said application, were you referring to the original application, or the current one that the attorney just said, the planned development?
Your comments directed to the commission, please, Mr. Lozano.
Well, if you know, uh, that it's either a yes or no, maybe Mr. Gonzalez would know.
What was your question again?
You just heard Sevantes say that Elizade had put this in the application. What application? The general retail or the planned development?
No, the subdivision, planned development.
Which, which one was it?
It was the subdivision, planned development. It wasn't, it wasn't, he, you have to submit the planned development before you can actually start applying for what he's doing today. We got that when the, the, the.
But there, he's going for a distinctly different venture now than the original application, and I'm just trying to find out if this is the original or the new one.
No, this is the original application that was submitted.
So it's not grandfathered in, because this is entirely different. Thank you, Mr. Sossi.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lethwich?
Uh, yes, Robert Lethwich, nine oh nine East Parkwood, Harlingen. I just wanted to, uh, make a differentiation here for Mr. Mesmer. It's like, uh, the attorney, the city attorney pointed out, this is a highly dense planned development, and you do a planned development so that you can, you can kind of go beneath the standard lot size and street sizes, and that's why this is even more important, that it be brought up to a higher drainage standard. When you compare it to Adams Crossing, this is even more dense than that subdivision, and I'd like to also point out that another planned development done, uh, in this same area was elevated above the neighboring subdivision, and those created runoff into the older subdivision, because the elevation was increased in the new planned subdivision. And this could be the same issue with this subdivision, so I would recommend that you do modify that to the, the fifty-year drainage plan, so that you, you have some onsite detention and not affect the neighboring communities, because every time we build something new around here, it seems like the neighbors are the ones taking the water. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lethwich. You want to step to the podium, sir?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name's Armando Elizarde. I'm the developer of Phase Two, uh, uh, East Treasure Haven. There was a lot of misinformation that was thrown up here. I'm gonna answer all of your questions, but a lot of the information is not correct, and I'll address each one of you, but I do want to state for the record, I'm only here for zoning. I'm not even, flood, that's not even on the agenda. But I will go ahead and answer your questions, because there's a lot of misinformation that was just thrown up here, which was incorrect. First of all, excuse me, I have a little bit of a sore throat. First of all, you addressed Adams Crossing, okay, Gabe? Right now, Adams Crossing, the city has spent zero, zero, okay? What you said is incorrect and false, Gabe. The money that was spent was to clean out that canal along Thirteenth Street, to make it wider and to make it deeper. That benefits all of North Harlingen. It has nothing to do with Adams Crossing. Am I on the right track, Gabe, or you just spent half a million dollars?
Um, I can't address that right now. I need to go back and check to see.
Okay, well, I will ask for, I will ask for a breakdown for you, sir, of, of the charges.
Yeah, okay.
Because I've seen them twice already.
Okay, well.
So unless, unless you're presenting me bad information, I will be happy to sit down with you and show you what it costs the city.
Okay.
Because we fought, and, and, and we went against the, the city engineer, uh, who was pushing for that.
Let, let me just continue, because I want to address, there was a lot of questions up here, so I want to address all of them, because there was a lot of misinformation. So first of all, Adams Crossing, okay? The city cleaned out the canal North Harlingen. It has nothing to do with Adams Crossing. Number two, okay? Especially if any of you are engineers. Adams Crossing is flood zone X. It gets no better than that. That's the top. Go back and check, who, if you live there, go back and check your insurance statement. You're in flood zone X.
So I love you, go talk to my neighbors.
Mayor, point, point of order, Mayor.
Yes, let's, let's let him continue.
Well, I'm.
I, I understand, but let's proceed.
Let me, let me address.
Let's not talk over, over each other. Go ahead.
It's flood zone X, which is the best that it gets, okay? Number one. Number two, it does not flood whenever it rains, okay? The city of Harlingen, two, three, I don't know how many years ago, had six, fifteen inches of rain in three hours. There is no subdivision in the valley that could handle that, okay? And the houses didn't flood, the streets flooded. in the valley that could handle that, okay? And the houses didn't flood, the streets flooded. We, the city of Harlingen has, has, has a
Please proceed.
I'd like to state for the record that incredibly rude, I'm up here trying to be a professional with you, trying to answer your questions professionally and doing that kind of, I mean, that's what you're serving, the community? That's what he got elected to do to walk out?
I understand, sir. Let's stay on point.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. Next, I would like to answer your questions. I haven't even gotten to mine because I'm answering yours.
I under, go ahead.
Okay, next thing is, this is also flood zone X, which is the best that it gets. We have done three subdivisions in this area already with zero problems. We have two more planned with zero problems. There is over 100 acres right now, not mine, being developed in that area. That is a PD and it's a planned development already that is being developed in that area. The next thing that makes this phase very, very unique and special, we are adding Golden Bear Drive, okay? That is going to be the second exit out of Treasure Hills. That is going to be a way, right now, if there's an emergency in the entrance of Treasure Hills where a school is, you can't get out unless you go back to 509. We are donating the land to the city. We are paying for the installment of Golden Bear Drive free to the taxpayers, which will save the taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars. If this development isn't done, the only way you're going to get out of Treasure Hills is 509, where the trailer is backed up. Now, the community will be able to come out to Hayne Drive, take a left to the school, a right to Treasure Hills. It will give them another way out. It will lighten the traffic in that area. And we're doing that for free for the city. So it's not only about my development, it's about the people that live in that area and what it's going to give them. So there's a lot of misinformation that's up here that is incorrect.
Thank you, Mr. Elizante. I do have one question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, the city of Harlingen wants to be pro-development, and we want our city to grow, but we want to do so responsibly with these new changes where we have increased for developers, which I understand that there's some cost to be absorbed. Is that something that you're willing to do?
Well, let me just point this out. In this development, first of all, as developers and the planning department can tell you, we've been working on this for years. When you identify a piece of property, it's years before it comes to this board. And we're working on it years in advance. In the meantime, if the ordinance are changing, we're trying to keep up with those. I would tell you that, and I don't know if you caught this.
We're going to have to wrap it up.
Okay, this right here, all that is the pond. That right there is the pond.
I caught that.
Okay, it's an acre and a half of the pond. The second thing is, when we submitted our papers, that 25-year, that was on the books. That's what we went with. It changed three times in 18 months. We went 10, 25, and 50. We cannot keep up with that. You were changing the ordinances faster than we could design. So we went with what's on the books at the current time. It's not fair to developers in the community to say, well, we made a change, and now you're going to change it. You're changing too fast. The development is in the pipeline already.
I understand. So just to answer the question, it would be no.
To answer your question, we've been put on notice going forward that it's a 50-year plan. All our developments will be that. This plan was handed in with 25, so we would go with that.
I understand. Did you have a question, Commissioner Bettis?
I would think that, because I understand your concern for developers, but I would also, like, my job as the city commissioner is to worry about the future residents that will be living there. And I know this area where this subdivision, it's not, it's not in my district, but I always get, actually, because I'm very active on social media, and I get a lot of messages from District Three, that they're telling me that their area floods, Treasure Hills floods. I have some coworkers that literally live in Treasure Hills, and they're always telling me like, hey, you need to do something about Treasure Hills, you need to do something about Treasure Hills. And then this, because it floods in that area. And I would think as a developer, because I know you're a very successful developer, and you're doing, you're doing good things for Harlingen, but I would think you'd want to, you know, make sure that the future residents that would live in your subdivisions you're constructing would have the best, you know, standards that are available. And you're right, it's been changing. But if you've noticed, it's been changing where, because the reason it's been changing is because we've noticed that there has been an issue with the flooding. And then the city has felt that by raising the standards to the 50-year, that is the best course for the people here in Harlingen to prevent additional flooding and to improve drainage. So what we're asking you here in the city commission is to help us. Help us help the people that you're building these homes for. Help us improve their flooding. So when they move in, they don't have to worry a year or two or three years from now, oh, my house is flooded. Because you're saying right now that, oh, it's not getting to the house. But why are we going to be reactive and wait till it actually does before we do something? We can prevent that, and we just, you just follow the standards there right now, 50 years, and you're good. Because I'm going to make a motion to approve, but with the condition that we add the 50-year standard to your subdivision. Because I think that it's the responsible thing to do. And I'm not anti-development, I'm pro-development, but like the mayor said, I believe in responsible development. And I think for the past couple of years, that's been lacking. I feel that that's the reason why the city is in the situation that we're in, because we've had, subdivisions have been rubber stamped, you know, some subdivisions have been built, have gotten waivers, that haven't even met the minimum requirement that we used to have. And as long as I'm here, I'm going to make sure that the city can do everything we can to make sure that we do something about the flooding. So I'm going to make a motion to
So first of all, we need to read the caption.
Go.
Second of all, I think we need to distinguish two things, because there's a little truth on both sides here, right? First of all, in terms of the subdivision itself, if the subdivision came in under the old rules, then the old rules apply to the subdivision. However, he's asking for something different, a special fit, planned development district. We're not imposing those drainage restrictions on a subdivision. You're imposing those on the rezone, on the planned development district. So if you want the planned development district, you can impose those drainage conditions on that district because it's a special issue, right?
The point is, I can impose those restrictions.
On the planned development.
Okay.
And I think that's going to come in later. I think right now it's just a rezoning.
Well, right. And so if you're going to approve it, then it has to be
It's approved condition.
With those conditions on that district.
Okay.
I would like to point out that we've been working with the city for years. We're installing this Golden Bear, and we're donating the land to the city. I could have not done that and made the whole thing multifamily. It's general retail. Under that, I can do the density less, but I didn't. Okay, I didn't do that because I thought that exit was important to the city. That street is on the city's thoroughfare plan. If we're going to impose those and raise those standards, we may no longer be able to afford to do this subdivision if that's what we're going to do. So keep in mind that we're giving the taxpayers free, besides the land, hundreds of thousands of dollars. And we're going into things that have nothing to do with my subdivision. So I want you to realize that what he just told you is true. I can go multifamily and not come before this board because it's general retail, but I'm not doing that. I'm going 25. I'm trying to build houses. But you're electing to go the other way, and you're going to lose the opportunity to save this community hundreds of thousands of dollars. And if you don't believe me, the gentleman's right here. We have 100% support from the planning department. It was voted on unanimously. 100% support from the city engineer, from the fire marshal. Every single entity in this city supports the project. You're going to cost this city hundreds of thousands of dollars. And if you don't believe me, here he is, ask him.
And I'm also
I don't understand that mentality. You don't realize, you don't realize what's going to happen there. I'm sorry, are you?
Yeah.
No, no.
No, let's, let's, no, we're not going to talk over.
This is my road because it's going to
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Elizarde. We've been very generous with the time, and I appreciate your time and your efforts. And like I said before, we are, want to be pro-development, and hopefully the commission takes that into consideration. Thank you for all of your time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who want to speak for or against? Mr. Martinez?
Hi. I told the PZ they're going to have this problem. They didn't pay attention to the upgrading of the numbers. We are pro-development. And this gentleman should not be held to problematic issues that we have because we're not organized. I'd like to see what the Drainage District, number three, the one San Benito, what they said. They're the ones responsible for drainage in this area. Am I correct or not, Mr. Gabriel?
Drainage District number three right now wouldn't really have any impact on that particular
Do they pay taxes to Drainage District number three?
Oh, that I'm not, I'm not sure.
You're sure they do. Look at the tax reports. Here you all tell you. I believe this gentleman with supportive staff at this time, if the Drainage District has already done an assessment and evaluation of this, they're the ones who are responsible. They're paying taxes, all these people in Treasure Hills. No, they're not. I mean, I, the city has in the middle, from the arroyo city that, I mean, arroyo to the east, according to the mapping, the Drainage District number three controls that, and they pay taxes to it. They should be doing more improvements, enlarging the ditches, ditches, et cetera, because this is the best area to build by the arroyo. Just draw straight lines and bigger ditches, and you're getting there real fast. The other areas we have problems, of course, you just talked about 13th Street. But let's not stop development because we're, because this past administration did these changes. Let's work with the Drainage District and the city and the Drainage District number five, I think is the one that's over here to, on the east side of town, and get this thing corrected. Because we need to build. The lumberyards need to sell, the plumbers and HAV, et cetera. I believe if it has passed staff, the only question I got, is the Drainage District going to be able to cover a six, eight, or 10-inch rain that's pretty much storms around here? 15-inch is right. You can't handle the kind of water anywhere. It's going to eventually go out. But this drains, that area drains much better. The only problem we have is the Treasure Hills right there at that reservoir, it's unidentified, it has flooding. And that, that area should be a Drainage District number three problem, not the city. They pay taxes for that.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? I'm sorry, Mr. Elizarde, we already gave you a lot of, a lot of time. I do apologize. Anyone else? We're going to close the public hearing at this time, and I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances, ordinance number 16-8 of the city of Harlingen to rezon from general retail district to planned development district for residential and multifamily purposes on 25.33 acres out of land, compromise of 10 acres out of lot nine, 9.99 acres out of lot 10, 2.67 acres out of lot 15, and 2.67 acres out of lot 16, block 146, San Benito Land and Water Company located at the northeast corner of Hayne Drive and Wayland Road.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve based on the conditions that the developer meets the 50-year standard.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion, motion carries. Dr. Chiu?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Cervantes. Moving on to item number eight, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a rezoning request from Planned Development District for commercial use to residential multifamily district For lot one, block one, Adam, am I not right?
I'm sorry.
Adam Landing Subdivision located at 1302 Adams Landing Avenue. Applicant is more land surveying.
Yes, Mayor, this is a property at the corner of Adams Landing Avenue and Loop 489. It's currently a zone PD District for commercial uses, and they're proposing to change it to multifamily residential. This is the property, Adam Landing, Loop 489, currently a zone PD District. This subdivision is all developed, and so we just have this vacant tract at the corner that the original developer, the vision was for this property to be retail or commercial, but it never developed that way. We have, there's a buyer that is interested in purchasing, but for multifamily development, which is what you have across this, across the street. That's a picture of the property, the comprehensive plan. No one spoke in opposition during the planning and zoning commission meeting, and the board recommended approval unanimously.
Is there any discussion? Okay, we'll open it up for a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against the ordinance? Having no one to speak, we'll move on to, I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Harlingen, rezoning from planned development district for commercial use to residential multifamily M2 district for lot one, block one, Adams Landing Subdivision located at 1302 Adams Landing Avenue, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a rezoning request for residential, single-family district to residential duplex district for lots 11 and 12, block four, Reyna subdivision located at 721 Pittman Street. Applicant is Marcos Reyes for Juan F. Salazar.
Yes, Mayor, this is on the middle of Pittman Road, halfway between Findley and Kelly, which is halfway between Commerce and New Combs. So this is an older neighborhood that has two vacant lots in the middle of the neighborhood. And the, these are big lots, 50 by 140. So the property owner is interested in building duplexes, one duplex in each of the, in each of the two lots. So it's an older neighborhood. It's all developed with single-family homes. There is some duplex zoning on the next street to the north, which is Orange Heights. So it's two vacant lots in the middle of houses all around. This is a photo of the property. In the comprehensive plan, it calls for low-density residential, and duplex is considered a low-density residential, so it's in line with the comprehensive plan. And no one spoke in opposition during the public hearing, so the board recommended approval unanimously, five to zero both.
Is there any discussion? Thank you, Mr. S
Public hearing.
Yes. So now we'll move to the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against the adoption of this ordinance? Having no one speak for or against, we'll move to, I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Harlingen, rezoning from residential single-family R1 district to residential duplex R2 district for lots 11 and 12, block four, Reyna subdivision located at 721 Pittman Street, and providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow an unmanned telecommunications internet facility in a general retail district located at 114 and 118 West Madison Avenue. Bearing legal descriptions of lots 10 and 11, block 25, Harlingen original town site. The applicant is Norma Brandscomb of Vexis Fiber.
Yes, this is for a proposed building for fiber optic telecommunications that requires a special use permit. This is on Madison Avenue between A Street and Fourth Street. You have the fire station to the, to the north. So the zoning is all general retail district. The fire station is just north. The current, the property is vacant. Fire station. And it's all, it's all commercial. There's no houses around the property. Photo of the property. So this is a picture of what the building will look like. We asked for an example. So that's an example that they sent, the company sent us of what the building will look. It's, you know, I think it's going to blend with the, with the surrounding areas. And it's going to be all fiber optic cables to improve communications for that whole part of town. Staff recommends approval contingent on conditions by planning and building inspections on fire department. Planning and zoning commission held a public hearing, and no one spoke in opposition, and recommended approval unanimously, subject to the conditions.
Is there any discussion? Move to the open, the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against?
Good afternoon, or evening. I'm Norma Branscombe. I'm with Vexis Fiber. I'm director of construction for the RGB. Just to let you know who we are, we're a new fiber-to-the-home ISP. So we'll be providing video, voice, and data services to, to our customers here once we're all done with construction. So what this lot's going to be used for, it's a prefabricated building that will house telecommunications there to allow, that's going to be our central office, to the end customer. So we've already started some constructions in some areas.
How far out does your reach on that?
It's going to be from San Benito all the way to Mission right now.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so.
Excellent.
Yes.
Well, welcome.
Is it better closer than, or is it the same? Like, is it the same in Mission as in Harlingen?
It's all going to be fiber-to-the-home, so we are directly fiber-to-the-home from that central office, from that location to, to the customer.
That's excellent.
So it's going to, it's going to allow symmetrical service.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the, the public hearing, and counsel, please.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances, ordinance number 16-1 of the city of Harlingen to issue a special use permit to allow an unmanned telecommunications internet facility in a general retail district located at 114 and 118 West Madison Avenue, bearing legal descriptions of lots 10 and, and 11, block 25, Harlingen original town site, subject to the following: one, compliance with the requirements administered by the planning and development, building inspections, and fire prevention departments.
Motion for approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Item number 11, public hearing in action to approve the one-year action budget for fiscal year 2022 to 2023 of the Community Development Block Grant Program and fiscal year 2022 to 2023 of the Home Investment Partnership Program.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. For the record, Elvira Cabazo, CDVG Compliance Coordinator. In compliance with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development requirements, our current approved consolidated plan and strategy is based on HUD's national objectives, which are to provide decent housing, create suitable living environments, and to expand economic opportunities that would primarily benefit low-to-moderate-income persons. As a condition in receiving a Community Development Block Grant, CDVG, and home funds, the city is required to prepare a one-year action plan outlining objectives, outcomes, and indicators for each activity that receives funding. The 2022-2023 fiscal year CDVG allocation is 887,502, which is a decrease of 37,970, and a home program allocation is 379,160, which is an increase of 44,743. The notice of funding availability was published in the Valley Morning Star and posted on the city's website on April the 8th, 2022. Application deadline was May 5th, 2022. Seven applications were submitted from subrecipients, six from the Parks and Recreation Department, and one from Code Compliance Department for public facilities and services needs. A public hearing was held on May 23rd to receive citizen comments regarding priorities, and presentations were made by applicants for funding requests. A workshop was held on May 31st, 2022 by the Community Development Advisory Board to establish funding recommendations for city commission. Prior to establishing their funding recommendations, the Community Development Advisory Board and staff reviewed and elevated the applications based on their prior performance, priority, need, submission requirements, and project eligibility. The recommendation provided in your packets was unanimously approved by all Community Development Advisory Board members present. The required 30-day comment period will begin on June 20th and then on July 20th. The mayor and city commission will pass a resolution adopting the 2022-2023 funding allocations on July 20th, 2022. We're available if you have any questions.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions. I'm a little concerned about the, the 234,000 going to lighting, and I'd like to see if we can maybe give more to the Boys and Girls Club. And also, you mentioned code compliance. Was there a fund request for code compliance or?
Yes, clearance and demolition.
That's where?
Clearance and demolition.
So we're only giving them 65, and I know that we're shorthanded with the code compliance. I, I think we need more staff members in that. But I, I guess my whole point is, is there a way where we can maybe move those funds back and, and reallocate them to?
I'd want to talk to Javier about the lights and stuff, like what exactly, you know, how's that going to work and stuff like that. And I, and I would also ask, I'm sorry. Okay, it's working. Also about the Boys and Girls Club, I'm a big supporter of the big Boys and Girls Club. I mean, like I mentioned to Mr. Gathry once, I mean, I played there growing up. I, when my thinner days, I'd play basketball on, on the courts. But I know this year, they, they, we gave them a raise, I think, earlier this year. I don't know how much. Gabe, do you know how much it was that we, because I know they asked for a raise that we were giving them, because we allocate a certain amount of money to them every year.
Last year, we gave them $100,000 for, but that was for COVID-related expenses that they had. That's been the only additional funding that we've given them.
But because I remember approving like, because we give them something annually, right?
We do. We give them two different allocations. One is for the, the youth services program they provide, and another one is for their general.
But didn't we increase that as well?
Yes, yes, we did.
How much, by how much?
Oh, can we, I don't have that number.
But we did increase it, right?
Yes, we did.
And then I also know that, I remember seeing it, because I saw it on the, on the website, that they receive $333,333, and I don't know if it was 33 cents too, because I know the county made a big deal about that. So I know they've been receiving a lot of funding from that. So I, I don't think I would agree with, with moving some of that to the Boys and Girls Club, because I think, they're a great organization, and, but I, I think they've been funded a lot this year, especially by the county, the $300,000, that was a lot. So I, I would prefer to get a little bit more, like why that lighting is needed by the parks, because I, I know there was, there's something about the, the park, and people are saying, oh, why are we using the lighting? And I know that, I've heard how we can maybe repurpose some parks, like the one we have over there by the, the soccer complex. But at the same time, the, the, this funding is supposed to be for low income. And I agree with that, but a lot of the people that use the parks at Victor Park are low-income people. That, that's how the little kids go out there, and they play, and they need the lighting in order to play their football and all that. Then asking them to drive all the way over there to the city, by the city land transfer station, I mean, that's imposing more cost on a lot of them, because, you know, gas prices the way they are and all that. I, I don't think I would agree with that.
I know, but that's.
With all due respect, like, they, they didn't ask for a lot. They asked for 60 grand, which I think the Boys and Girls Club.
No, yeah, I get that.
And they got that cut, cut in half to, or to 33,000. What I look at is the, the return investment on the money, right? You're giving six, that increase of $30,000 is going to make a bigger impact. And I, I agree with, maybe, you know, I don't know about the lighting situation or any, any of the other ones, but I'm talking about the, the direct impact that that makes for those kids. And, 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 and if you, you were part of that, that presentation of, to hear those success stories of, of them, you know, having a chance and, and the services they provide, not only for students, but also for the school district and whatnot. I think it's a small increase. I, I don't think it was a big ask, because they make that little bit of money go a long way. And, and that's just my, my opinion. I, I can definitely agree with you on the other stuff, you know, if it's lighting, maybe, you know, you, you value engineer it, or you do something with it, that it, they get partial or, or whatever. But, but the direct impact of those dollars to the Boys and Girls Club, and yes, they get funding a lot, because it's a great organization, and it takes a ton of money to operate.
No.
24/7. And just like every other business, there, everything has increased as far as their food supply, electrical, all the utilities, or whatever it takes, you know, to, to operate. So I would just suggest, I mean, like I said, it's a $30,000, or 20, actually $27,000 increment, that, that you're actually to say, you know, reduce it from somewhere else, but give them the, the 60,000 that, that they asked for, because they've proven that they use the money the right way, and it has a direct impact on a bunch of kids.
Yes, no, I agree with you 100% about that, but at the same time, I'm bearing in mind that they got a check for $333,000.
But, but we're not in their, I mean, I don't know what, what, they have a lot of expenses, do they? It may not be.
No, I understand that, but at the same time, I'm, I'm worried about also the kids that go use Victor Park. So if we could speak to Javier, and I, I just wanted to know, like, what exactly, like, are the lights really needed? What's the, like, what's going on? Like, why are we, I know, I understand the lights are very expensive. Or what's going on?
Bree, before, before he answers, I just had a real quick question.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And I think this is more for Gabe. So I know that these, these are the funds that they've requested to present to us, correct?
Yes.
And I didn't mean to complicate things. All I'm saying is, can we, at, at tonight, just maybe table this, so that way they can take those funds and reallocate them where we think they would be better suited? And let me give you an example. I, I know the lights are important, but the, the purpose and the goal of CDVG is supposed to be for low-income housing rehabilitation. And if you look at 14A, we're only giving 31,000 for housing rehabilitation, or I think some of that 234 should be used. We're only giving Housing Rehabilitation Administration 42. And then code compliance, I mean, all of us have gotten phone calls on, we don't have enough enforcement, we don't have enough staff. And so I'm just wondering if some, to make it simple, can we, can we reallocate some of these funds by making some kind of a motion tonight?
Frank.
If I could, if I could just kind of explain where, where we are with the guidelines. Any, if you see the categories under Public Services, it starts at 05A, and it goes down to 05M. That total has to be 15% or less of the $887,000. So those numbers can only be allocated and redistributed within that public service section. That, those dollars cannot total more than $133,000. 133, 125.
But we can reallocate the $27,000, correct?
You can, the $27,000 in.
For the Boys and Girls Club?
Well, you can, but you've got to take it from some, someplace else in Public Services. It's got to stay in Public Services.
Right.
Javier, I, I have a, a question, and I think it goes to Commissioner Puente. When I was reviewing this, it, it stands out to me that the purpose of, the sole purpose of the funds is to provide, it says provide decent housing and create suitable living environments and to expand economic opportunities that would primarily benefit low-to-moderate-income persons. How do we come to providing, you know, 234,000 and then another 35,000? I, I agree that the lights need to, to be fixed, and we need to make those improvements at Victor Park. But is this the right path to, to get that, to, to be able to do that? It looks like it's not, based on, I don't know how that fits into decent housing or creating those living environments or expanding economic opportunities. I don't see that. Can you, can you explain?
Well, I, I understood that the funding is for quality-of-life projects, right? And so these are quality-of-life projects, bringing kids, providing opportunities for them to play football. There's only three fields that we have in the city of Harlingen that are football designated. The rest are either soccer or baseball. And there's, there's always requests for football fields, especially lighted, because kids want to play in the evening, because it's, it's hot, especially right now. So that was the reason, or that was the purpose of us submitting our application. I know that, based on the census tract, across the expressway, there's a housing project. I believe that's on M Street. And so those are the things that we're taking into, we're factoring in when we submitted our application. You know, Victor Park is, you know, serves a lot of people. We have tennis, we have baseball, we have football, we have the new playground there, the dog park, and then the swimming pool, of course. So it's a roundabout park that offers opportunities for several kids.
Sir, but I think I've asked this before, and maybe, maybe remind me, or maybe I haven't. Those leagues, those leagues, they, they charge fees, right, for entries and stuff?
Yes, sir.
Couldn't, couldn't they, they tag on a fee that we would collect as a city that would go to such improvements that, that would make, like, because are, are we doing all the maintenance on the fields and stuff, right?
Yes.
Right on that?
Yes.
So, so I know it's supposed to be a, you know, a 501(c) or whatever, right? And, 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 you know, some of those kids, they have like, you know, 1,000 kids playing or whatever. It's a large number. Couldn't we have them collect a fee that they would be able to turn in, that would, that would address some of those issues? And it's not going to fix them on the month, but it would be a continual thing, that it could be a reimbursement to the city. And we can, the mayor's point is saying, not, we're not disagreeing that they, they need the lights, and they'd be a great asset, but this may not be the same, the right funding mechanism for it, that we, that we want to use this fund particularly to do X, Y, and Z, there's, you know, other projects, like the Commissioner Puente put that we're only giving 30, $40,000 to, that we would have a better impact on the purpose of what it's created for. Because I think by, by allowing, I mean, to continue to put that kind of investment, and the people that are running those leagues, even though it's a nonprofit, you know, they're collecting quite a bit of money, right?
We, we can do that, Commissioner. Just, but we just have to amend the contracts to actually include that they charge us.
I got a couple of ideas here. I agree with Commissioner Puente on that 234. That needs to be real, reallocated. My number one thing, if we're really concerned, we need to do something about the, the clearance and the, the demolishing the unsafe structures around all the schools.
That's a good point.
Okay. So lighting is good, but demolishing these structures that are unsafe, especially around schools, we need to take care of that. We need to address it. So if it was me, I'm all for moving all of it straight to the clearance and demolition. Okay? Now, the lightings that you're requesting for the football, if I'm mistaken, we received an email where there was issues with the lightings for the baseball fields, the, the Little League, because there was some type of tournament. You also have to keep in mind that we all, you also have other avenues. The number one avenue I think you can, you have access to is the EDCB board that can take care of that, those lighting issues. Now, as far as the football games, I'm sorry, but they could go to the east side and, at the complex and use, and use those fields out there. You have plenty of lights, plenty of parking, and you don't endanger any pedestrian that goes out to their car because they parked on the side of the road. Okay? That's, this year, we need to start addressing these unsafe structures. Okay? We already had, we've had some major issues in, in different parts of the country and state, where we have shoots, shootings in schools.
So Commissioner, may I ask you, what, what do you feel about the Boys and Girls Club?
Listen, I don't have an issue with them having this 33, not.
Well, it's 20, I mean, I'm asking you to increase it to 27.
You do realize, though, if you, if you take away, if you want to add more to the Boys and Girls Club, you have to take something away from Migos of A to the area agency on aging.
It's got to stay within that realm, so.
What Gabe mentioned, and I, I wrote it down here, is what is it, 15%?
15%.
13% of the public.
Right. So there's not a lot of money to work with.
There's not a magic wand.
Yeah. Would it be possible, Sandy, for you to, like, explain to us the allocations?
It's not Sandy.
I'm sorry.
Well, what can we, what can we increase? What could we, what amount could be increased with, with staying within the parameters?
There's very little. I don't think that there's.
There's not much room to.
Room to, to move in that section of, because it's, because as Gabe pointed out, there's only 15% or less can be allocated. So the, it, when you look at it, it's pretty, it seems pretty fair.
Where would we take it from? Or if we could, where could we take it from?
You can't. It, it has to be from these areas.
From, from 5A down to.
5M.
5M. 5N.
That has to be 15% or less of the total allocation.
Right. And so all of those are, are, I would argue, equally as important.
So, so Mike, again, my question is, and this is towards Gabe, can we just reallocate the 234 to another fund where we don't have to do it tonight, but either we or the board can go and allocate that money and redistribute?
You'd have to do it.
I like Commissioner, one of his ideas.
You'd have to do it tonight, but you just can't put it in Public Services.
Okay.
We couldn't do what he suggested and move the money into demolition of housing? And then we'll find a different funding, or you all, you all will find a different mechanism for lighting, you know, to fund the lighting?
So if it goes?
And, and then you can also do that with the Boys and Girls Club.
I have a question. If you move $234,000 into demolition, and we don't use that $234,000 extra for demolition, what's the federal penalty?
We, we have to stay within 1.5% of the allocation every year. So you would take the entire 887,000 of CDVG money, multiply times 1.5, and then at the middle of next year, we'd have to have less than that. Otherwise, HUD would make it a finding.
So there are federal guidelines, and we have to follow them to the penny, or there's federal repercussion. federal repercussions to the city of Harlingen.
But, but there's plenty of work to...
Is, is there two-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand dollars worth of work? Is that based on fact or, or a feeling?
I tell you what.
I think that's a fact.
I have requests...
It's a fact? You think it's a fact?
I would...
Based on what?
Okay, I, I would suggest...
I live here.
I would suggest...
You live here.
Okay, let's, let's not talk over each other.
I would suggest, instead of, if you guys want to do the lighting at Victor Park, I don't know if you guys have ever been to Vestal Park? I've been to that park because I had, it's not my district again, but they reached out to me, and, but let me finish. And again, that area, the parking lot is all messed up, they have no lighting, you have kids that are running all over in the dark, they can get renovated and stuff, so we can help with that. Um, I know you're, you're in, you're, you're, you're insisting on the Boys and Girls Club, but...
No, my, my, my point was going to be is, is you all just brought up a really good point about lighting is not really an issue of where this fund should be. You, you can take, you can do lighting from general fund or, or some other fund, but this particular program, right, is designed to do, to, to help out with certain areas. And, and the way I read it, it's, it's, we're not allocating the money in the right places for the way the, the fund is intended. You can, you can, I, I really like the idea of Commissioner Moroz, of, of, because there's a lot of bad houses in town. I mean, and, and, and that costs money, and it has an immediate impact of, 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 in the community, to not have, you know, drug activity or safe zones, you know, it's just cleaning up, cleaning up the neighborhoods. And we, and we used to do a really good program with the National Guard, I mean, I, I know that, that, that funding went away.
For right now, now, let, let me, I have a question for you, ma'am. In another item or two, there's going to be more funds allocated to Vestal Park, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so Vestal Park right now, off of this right here, we're looking at thirty-five-thousand twenty-seven dollars, okay? But because there's an issue, or there was an issue in the past, Vestal Park is going to get another hundred-and-fourteen-thousand from the previous year, correct?
Correct.
So, Vestal Park is going to get some funding that they never have had, so we should be, or they'll be better off now that they get the past three years or four years or prior to that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so Commissioner Pettis?
No, I agree with you, I didn't know about that.
Yeah, that, that's fine.
Commissioner...
I wouldn't, I wouldn't put the whole two-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand, because I agree with Mike on that, that's rare, but I, I agree with Mike...
I'm sorry, what?
With the point that there, there might not be...
It shouldn't be rare.
I agree with him to the point where, where we're not sure if there's that much work for that area, you know, for all that demolition, so if you wanted guys to move it, I would say, move it to something that we, that we can, like, you know, the housing rehab or something like that.
That's a good point, Commissioner Pettis. So, let me make this recommendation. If we take the two-thirty-four and divide it by three, that's seventy-eight thousand. We can leave seventy-eight thousand with the Victor Park lighting, give seventy-eight thousand to the housing rehabilitation, which would better, have a better use, and then the other seventy-eight thousand to the code compliance. And then whatever funds that they don't use, they can, I guess they can allocate it to whoever.
We can reprogram it.
Right, they can reprogram.
But I like, I like the idea of dividing it, but I don't, I wouldn't put any money in lighting, you can find that money somewhere else. Put it, put it into the programs that, you know, these people, they, they, they request it, man, this is what they got.
It's a recommendation. You guys, tell me what you all want. That was just one point.
The thing about the lighting is that, I understand what you're saying is like, hey, let's, let's not use this money, but the thing is, if we can use this money for lighting, why don't we? Because if, if we, if we take it out for, like, say, our general fund or something like that, that's money that you're taking away from drainage and from other things that we can be doing, and this is federal money, so why, why not put it to the, the lighting? I agree with you about taking the majority of it out for, and, and dividing it to the other areas. That, that's, that's good, but I don't think we should just leave the lighting completely alone, I mean, just leave them, they need lighting, the kids need lighting for the football.
Okay, so are we going to give the Boys and Girls Club money? I want to make sure I understand.
The Boys and Girls Club, yes, they stay at the, the twenty, thirty-three thousand.
It's mathematically impossible to increase to the Boys and Girls Club without hurting any other organization. Pick the organization you want to hurt or kill.
So, can I make a motion at this point of a public hearing?
Public comments, a public hearing. But I just want to make, I just want to say one thing and, and then we can go to the public hearing, but the, there is a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there is, they just did into it, right. So, to Commissioner Pettis's point, being a mom, right, and having kids that play sports, there's soccer going on all the time, so I, it, it would be impossible to have the football league at the soccer complex, because it'd be overlapping and there's just not enough space. So, the soccer leagues go on all year, so we can't, it, it's a, it's a great idea, but it's not possible, because there's not that space available, because it's being utilized throughout the year. It's not just seasonal, and I can tell you that as, as a mom. And I also agree with Commissioner Pettis that it would be a hardship for folks that live around Victor Park, that maybe walk to the park or in that area, to have to drive across town. So I do think it's important for the lighting, but I also think it's important that we are not designating such a significant amount to, to lighting when, when this money is, is supposed to go for other, other purposes. But a, a smaller portion seems to be, seems to be fair. But, Gabe, is this, and, and I, and I ask this question, is this something that we have to decide today, or can we reallocate and come back and, and be able to pass?
Can we do this in the first meeting in July and still be in compliance? Josh, do you know?
Yep. Yes, sir, it can be reallocated, we still have time until July the first.
They, they have to decide how they want to reallocate it tonight, and then we come back in July and just adopt the resolution.
But does it have to be, we have to do it tonight? We can't do it in July and then give you the, one-year action plan?
No, because our, our action plan is due to HUD by August this year.
Yeah, they're going to turn.
Okay.
So it doesn't give us enough time for the comment period.
Okay, and one of, one of the things that, that we're coming to you so late is because HUD didn't tell us what our entitlement amount was until about a month ago. They hadn't made a decision, so it, it, the federal government delayed it so long that it actually hurt our, our process of getting this to you.
And, and so, once again, we've hired staff to come up with recommendations, and once again, you should fire the staff because you disagree with their recommendations. If, you have to trust the people who are in charge of things within the city.
Mike, there's nothing wrong with having a discussion, and a, a valid point of making sure we're using the monies the right way as they're intended, not finding a loophole to put things up, and I totally agree with the consensus of this board, that we'll split that money up and however you all see fit, or whatever you all agree upon, you know? So who wants to make a motion?
How, we have to have the allocation first.
Oh, sorry, we got to do the thing.
Yes. So, do we need to allocate this before the public?
How about we raise the allocation?
So, we'll go ahead and, this has been great, but let's go ahead and move to the, the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak for or against?
Good evening, all. My name is Gerald Gaffright, and I'm the director of the Boys and Girls Club for the past few years. And first of all, I want to say that I am very grateful to all the city commissioners, the mayor, all of the Community Development Block Grant Board people, great people and wonderful, difficult decisions. Today, just today, over five-hundred youngsters of different ages, six to eighteen, walked into one of the Boys and Girls Clubs today for activities. Tonight, while we're here, somewhere between a hundred and a hundred-and-fifty young adults are using outdoor facilities, help paid for by decisions made by you all to provide those facilities. A lot of that money that came from the county, we used to upgrade facilities. It was an opportunity for us to upgrade our facilities. We have a fifty-year-old building. It's not a brand-new, state-of-the-art building, but it's something we have turned into, something that our community can be proud of, and it's going to serve youngsters long after I depart. The funds, whether they come from CDVG or other sources, and so you'll know exactly how, how it had happened, you increased our funding by fifty-thousand dollars, which is paid monthly back last year, and so we're kind of losing half of that this way, and I can assure you, we will survive. We have a strong board of directors, we have great community support, and the city commission and mayor, we have great support here. So I'm not concerned about it, but I hate to see anything affect our operations. We have to pay people a little bit better to keep them, so they don't go off. They can go to CVS and make fifteen dollars an hour, so they're not going to come work for us for nine dollars an hour, so just like everybody else, all those things have changed. So the twenty-seven-thousand dollars, which is, you know, we're talking about, not insurmountable, but it does have an effect on us, has an effect on our services, and with the number of children that we serve, I think we are able to provide a good bang for the buck wherever those funds come from. So I'm a little ignorant about all the devices, but I could suggest maybe that twenty-seven-thousand dollars could be found in the general budget somewhere, make up the difference there. I, I don't know, but maybe there's a way.
I have a question, because I was told by one of the members from the CB, the board, that the Boys and Girls Club had a, had a three-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-dollar surplus this past year, is that true?
That was because of the county money. So you can see what the surplus was, if you take three-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars away from that, it's not a very big surplus.
And you use every dollar.
And of course, that county money was a one-time thing. They're not lining up, they're trying to figure out how our city has graciously done fund this year after year. That was money that they had from COVID relief, and we lobbied long and hard to get some.
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you for all you do for our community.
Thank you.
I, I did want to mention, I know we're on this, but on, we've, there's an allocation for the Loaves and Fishes for seventy-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty, and I believe that at previous meeting, we provided twenty-five-thousand to Loaves and Fishes.
That, that was for your group use?
Okay, so this was not for that, okay.
No, this is for operations.
Maybe there was somebody there for the Boys and Girls Club. All right. Anyone else? Mr. Pettis?
Yes, good evening, y'all. I was not planning to speak today, but I heard that Trigger were a Boys Club, and I decided I better speak up, because when I came in this evening, I saw Gerald Gaffright. I have not seen him since seventy-five, when I used to go to the Boys Club.
Can you, I'm sorry to interrupt you, can you just repeat your name and, and address?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, my name is, my name is Mike Gonzalez, sixteen-thirty-two Sam Houston Drive here in Harlingen. I came in this evening and I saw Gerald Gaffright, I have not seen him since seventy-five, and I remember when the Boys Club was right across from La, La Cita, in a crime-infested area. Gerald used to take us on his own time, on Saturdays and Sundays, to tournaments in Brownsville, you know, he even spent out of his pocket to keep us fed. This is a long time ago, where I was growing up in Fair Park, a crime-infested area. I could have either been a gangster, but because of Gerald and his time and commitment, I am standing here today before you, a successful businessman, a father, and hopefully a husband, right, you agree? Anything that comes up with the Boys Club, there should not be any opposition to it. I mean, you know, it's cheaper to pay for the Boys Club than it is to incarcerate young men. We can all agree on that. Chief, I mean, you're here, you know, it's cheaper, I mean, it's going to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to, to incarcerate them, versus allowing any dollars that y'all can, it's giving you hard to give them. Gerald deserves the keys to the city of Harlingen, and he has not already been given. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pettis.
Anyone else, Mr. Whitworth? Please state your name and address.
Robert Whitworth, nine-on-nine, New Park. Just a couple of things, I think Frank Moroz, I think you have a perfect idea. Those lights need to be funded by the four-B money, I mean, that's a quality-of-life fund, and we're already doing millions of dollars for parks, and if we can't get lights out of the four-B board, then, then, that's sad, and especially when that money could be used for some other aspect of what we're trying to do here tonight. I know that you, you like to emphasize on staff, but your elected officials are the ones that talk to the citizens out in the community, and they get input as well, and I appreciate everybody on the board, I appreciate staff, but it's, it's a partnership, I mean, everybody has ears to the ground, and I think everybody's opinion ought to be respected. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Mr. Pettis?
I too...
Make one more time.
Oh, Desi, Desi Mathias, eighteen-hundred-six, Sanford. I too support Boys and Girls Club. I too support Victor Park, Commissioner, I live right next to it. We raised my girls at Billway Elementary, my teacher, my wife is a teacher, come on, we, we raised our kids in the neighborhood, in Napali, at Boys and Girls Club, so. The point is this, where's that money coming from? Being a professional, government and community developer, economic developer, we voted two decades, a decade of, you know that, people, you were here, that we voted for the four-B, we called it the Harlingen for Women's Community Board. They have approximately one-point-four-million dollars for quality of life, we funded the splash part with that quality of life, okay? That's a four-B sales tax. This four-B sales tax has gone up because Sam came into town and we become a regional economic little boomtown. It got up, up to double in times in terms of retail sales, because of Sam's, not past pro, Sam's. I was there, so I, I've done the history. But, but what I'm minus is this, I'm not against, like, I, I know I'm in this for a long time, I'm not against parks. The kids need it. It's how we use our funding that we have, and this funding is for lights, the removal of lights, and it's kind of pretty enough to go here, but if you look at the government bones, I've been a former, a EDC director for the city of Brownsville, or several years ago, and year one, two, and three, when this started, for multimillion-dollar projects, it allows eligible projects for the removal of lights for low-income areas at urgent needs. Now, you tell me, if we don't have a safety issue as to what just happened in the valley, we can't expect the government to do everything, because you are government, but we need to do our local share of what had just happened in the valley, and that's safety. And it starts safety with this money, because that's all you have in the low-income areas, low-income areas. It starts right here from the sidewalks out, down our schools. I know that park is great, in fact, it's all used, Victor Park is saturated, and they want to put another field? We're going to have a green area. The kids also need green areas for Easter, so when they have a secret, yeah, Easter hunting, things like that. So come on, we got to reassess, retweet, and, and do the right funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mathias.
Mr. Mesmar made a comment about staff, and I don't know if he has agumption or courage in particular, but he wouldn't withdraw his appointee to the Community Development Block Grant, because he makes those appointments. So, we also have an incoming city commissioner who's the president of that, and he can tell you, because he can have the video, the Boys and Girls Club has a surplus, and that's what the members decided, that Mesmar appointed and the rest of them, the commissioners that are sitting with him. So if you don't care about your advisory boards, like the airport board or the Economic Development Corporation, don't appoint anybody. That's the same kind of logic about your crossing, Allen's crossing, and, and the other...
Stay on point, Mr. Lasalle.
Yes, well, I just want, he's smiling, I want him to understand that those kind of analogies can now come back and haunt you. So, I was at that meeting for the entire duration of that. There was a full-blown discussion by the members, and that's how they arrived. Boys and Girls Club got over fifty percent of what they requested, and it's like was said earlier, there's a certain cap. Gabe indicated that they had little time to work with it, so you got a cap and you have to make decisions. Your board members made the decisions, and they had political courage. Hopefully you all have some too. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm George McShan, fourteen-oh-one-oh court, and it's great to be here. I just want to let you all know that I've been on the Boys and Girls Club board for forty-two years, came a year after Gerald, and I can tell you a lot of history about what happened... And I can tell you a lot of history about what happened historically with the Boys and Girls Club, the collaboration with the school district, which I served thirty years on the board, the satellites we have, Boys and Girls, Boys and Girls Club at Moren Gardens, Manita Park, and also Los Vasinas, and also out at, excuse me, Wilson. I'll say this to you, it's important to invest, and I'm, invest in our most priceless and precious possession, thank you, and that's our children. Okay? The CDBG Board is an advisory, it's an advisory committee. Commissioners make that decision. It's in your hands. I do not participate in the deliberations of the Boys and Girls Club allocation because I'm a member of CDBG, and, excuse me, so I have a conflict.
Mr. Lozano, you're out of order.
So I did participate in it, but I just want to let you know that it's important, it's important to me. And many of you know how I feel about children in this school district, in this city. Invest in children. It's very important. It's very important to me. And I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but you know where I stand. And I know that you're going to have the courage to make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Thank you. We'll close the public hearing, and I think we need to allocate.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
To allocate, keep seventy-eight thousand with the Victor Park lighting, give seventy-eight thousand to clearance and demolition code compliance, and seventy-eight thousand to the housing rehab program, fourteen A. And just, so, again, the reason I'm not moving any funds over to the Boys and Girls Club is it's not, because it's under the, under the guidelines, you're already maxed out. So it's not like I don't want to give you the money. I agree with Commissioner Odebe, but because we have to stay within the parameters of that certain percentage, we can't change those numbers. So I saw fit to put, divide that up into three, which will give actually Vestal, or Victor Park, the seventy-eight thousand, you still have Vestal Park with their sixty-five. And again, I just, I really would like to see code and compliance. Oh, you know what? That was a motion. Sorry.
I'll second that motion, contingent upon you find the twenty-seven thousand dollars on a general fund to fully fund the request at the Boys and Girls Club. Twenty-seven thousand dollars on the general fund.
I don't think you can second that way. The motion is, is the motion, and then we can second that unless there's a motion that addresses that. But Commissioner Puentes' motion is just allocating to three.
The seventy-eight to those three categories. Yes.
Question, question for Frank, if I may. You said the two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, is that what you said? And you said it was seventy-eight thousand each?
No.
No.
I'm sorry.
It's two-hundred-and-thirty-four. I wanted to divide that up into.
Divide by three equals what?
Which is seventy-eight, seventy-eight thousand.
Well, I come up with like seventy-four thousand and change, and I did it by hand. I could be wrong.
Two-thirty-four.
Divided by three.
Seventy-eight thousand.
Oh, you were? Cool.
Yeah, it's seventy-eight thousand.
It's seventy-eight thousand?
Yes, sir.
Cool, thank you.
And then, so that's my motion.
So seventy-eight thousand for the lighting at Victor Park, and seventy-eight thousand for housing rehab, and I didn't catch the.
The zero-four clearance and demolition, which would go to our code, code compliance.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Can I ask a question? Can I ask you to amend, can he, can he add to that? Can you add to your motion to find twenty-seven thousand dollars on the general fund for the Boys and Girls?
No, we can't, because this is CDBG monies. What we'd have to do is in another, yeah, another, we can always go to the general fund outside of CDBG and see if we can find them that money. So I'd like to keep my motion.
No.
So there's a motion on the floor?
Yes.
There's been a request that he amend the motion. He's rejected the amendment, and wants to present the motion as he's presented it. And is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed. Sales.
The three?
I don't know.
Three opposed?
No, two are opposed.
No, three opposed.
Who opposed?
Randy, Mr. Morales, and myself.
I didn't even hear what we were voting on.
No, I didn't hear, I heard Commissioner Morales and Odebe.
I thought Mr. Randy opposed.
I heard.
I haven't voted, I didn't vote yet.
Oh.
That's the reason, I haven't voted yet, but.
Commissioner Puentes, can you, can you?
Can you repeat what you're saying? Yeah, because you're mixing it up. Say again.
It's the same.
No, no, the confusion is, I asked him to amend the motion.
And he did.
To include, to try to find the money for the Boys and Girls Club out of general fund. None of this, I'm agreeing with that. I just want to make a directive to the staff to go find that money for the Boys and Girls.
So if we approve it, we're getting the twenty-seven thousand?
No.
No, no, he rejected that. So the fact that he rejected, I don't want to, I don't want to.
No, 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 no. Let me, let me just clarify something real quick. I'm not necessarily rejecting it, I'm saying, we can still, no, listen, this is CDBG money. We can still go, we can still go later on and ask for the twenty-seven thousand that you're looking for. We can't find it, we can't.
You cannot make it contingent upon, because these are, this is federal money. So if you want general fund, we have to do it at another time.
We can't touch it. But I'm not saying, let's, well, the incoming people come in and make that suggestion like you're saying, or you, find them, find them the twenty-seven thousand in the general fund at another meeting. You can request that. Tonight has to do with CDBG federal monies. So my motion is, again, taking the two-thirty-four divided by three, it's seventy-eight thousand. We leave seventy-eight thousand in Victor Park lighting. Seventy-eight thousand will go to code enforcement, which we desperately need to clean up our neighborhoods.
Clearance and demolition?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, clearance and demolition, and seventy-eight thousand going into the housing rehab that we need to spruce up some of the low-income areas.
If we had a second, okay. All right, so motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on, item number twelve, public hearing in action to approve a substantial amendment to the City, City of Harlingen's twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-one-year action plan of the CDBG funding in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-two-hundred. Ms. Cabasos?
This is going to be for Vestal Park, correct?
This is a substantial amendment, there's, there's three. This is CV money, the COVID. The City of Harlingen proposes to reallocate funds from program year forty-five, which is twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, CDBG CV round one funds in the amount of a hundred, a hundred thousand from the health services activity to the financial hardship program and existing activity. And to eliminate the personnel protection equipment activity from program year forty-five, twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, CDBG CV round one funds and reallocate the amount of fifty thousand to the financial hardship program and existing activity. And to eliminate the public services activity from program year forty-five, twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, CDBG CV round one funds and reallocate the amount of three-thousand-two-hundred to the financial hardship program and existing activity. A public notice was published in the Valley Morning Star on May twentieth, twenty-twenty-two. The comment period started on May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, and will end on June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two. There were no comments received during the public hearing on May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two. The Community Development Advisory Board recommends approval of this substantial amendment.
And question then, so this will comply with the federal laws in which we originally received this money?
I'm sorry.
I said, so this will comply with all the federal laws in which we.
Yes, sir. We have to have a substantial amendment.
That's good. That's all I care about.
Is there any questions? Okay, thank you. We are moving to the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against? Having heard no one here to speak, I will ask the city attorney to, no, I'm sorry, nope. It's, it's a long day, sorry.
Staff recommends approval, mayor.
The staff recommends approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sorry, that, Ms. Cabasos. Item number thirteen, public hearing in action to approve a substantial amendment to the City of Harlingen's twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two one-year action plan in the amount of a hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-six-hundred-and-seven.
This substantial amendment is required to eliminate an existing activity and add a new activity to the twenty-twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two one-year action plan as follows. The City of Harlingen proposes to eliminate the Parks and Recreation Facility's Harlingen Sports Complex activity and add the Parks and Recreation Facility's Vestal Park Improvements activity in the amount of a hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-six-hundred-and-seven. A public notice was posted in the Valley Morning Star on May twentieth, twenty-twenty-two. The public comment period started on May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, and will end on June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two. There were no comments during the public hearing held on May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, excuse me. The Community Development Advisory Board recommends approval of this substantial amendment.
Same question, so this will comply with all the federal rules and regs in which we received the money originally?
Correct.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a public hearing. So we'll now move to the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against? Okay, no one is here, so now we have a motion?
Yes, motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Cabasos. Item number fourteen, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading amending the City of Harlingen ordinance number twenty-twenty-two dash oh-nine in part and amending section forty dash one-thirty-three of chapter forty of the Harlingen City Code. It's amended to remove the requirement that streets have existing curb and gutters to qualify for the placement, alteration, or removal of speed humps. Mr. Cook?
This is the commissioner's.
Yes.
Item.
Yes, I asked to get this put on there because my, as of right now, we amended the speed hump ordinance, what, two months ago, three months ago?
Three months ago, yes.
About three months ago, more or less, because I wanted to make it a little bit easier for some of the streets in my district that had been wanting to get speed humps, but some of the, the requirements were, in my opinion, unrealistic. So we lowered, we lowered the requirements. But at the same time, my area in District Five, a lot of it is, I'm not going to say rural, but it's, a lot of it is, you know, it's not subdivision, you have long streets that don't have the curb and gutter. And because of the curb and gutter, there's, they're, they're not able to get speed humps. And I've received a lot of requests from different constituents of mine that want speed humps, and I've submitted some to get speed humps, but they get them not automatically because they don't have curb and gutter. And I reached out to Craig, and I also reached out to the, our city engineer, and I was asking, like, what's the purpose of that? And then basically, the reason they want the curb and gutter is so that way the cars can't go around it, kind of thing. That was one of the reasons, correct, Craig?
That's right. We don't want them to avoid the speed hump by going down into the ditch to go around it.
Yeah. And then the thing is, like what he said, a lot of my, the thing is, a lot of the streets in my, in my district, they already have the ditches. So if they were to go around it, they'd fall into the ditch. So that's not something that, you know, most people would actually kind of do, and it, I just, and it's just frustrating that because of that little requirement, that's automatically disqualifying a lot of the streets in my district specifically, because like I said, mine is more, I guess, rural area of the, of the city. So I want to be able to remove this, so that way I can bring some speed humps to some of the neighborhoods or areas in my, in my district that have asked for it. And again, this will be on a case-by-case basis, it's not going to be like, oh, you know, it's party time, let's just throw the speed humps. But I just want more of the streets in my district to be able to hopefully be able to get the speed humps. They're still going to have to meet all the other qualifications, but they just don't need to have the curb and gutter.
Motion to approve.
Did you ask, did you ask, did you ask the chief his thoughts on the safety requirement about that? Because I just, they tell me not a problem, but at night, you know, people, a kid driving home and maybe goes off to the right or to avoid it.
I don't.
Chief? I mean, did you?
We are doing it now, Commissioner Odebe. Good point, good point, good point.
I just need to see my son drive, that's what I'm telling you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just brief thoughts on it. You know, I'm sure that's the purpose of the curb and gutter part of it, but your point is exactly right, and there's a lot of areas around town that don't have that. So in order to have the, the speed humps, there could be some issues. I don't think it would be that many. And I think once they're there, people will get used to them, and they're not going to be going around them. That's just my thoughts offhand.
Thank you, chief.
So you're saying there's a chance?
We have a motion. You have a motion?
Second.
I second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item number fifteen, discussion and possible action to solicit request for proposals to perform a needs assessment regarding personnel qualifications and procedures for establishing compensation increases for all city departments. And so I, I put this on the agenda because I want to ensure that the City of Harlingen is staffed in each department, to ensure that we have enough people for each department, and to ensure that we have a plan in place on how we are increasing compensation, so we ensure that all our employees are, are being considered for increases in their, in their pay, and to ensure that they're fair. And so this is the purpose that I put this on the agenda, and this is just to solicit the proposals, and then they would come in, staff would do that, and then they would come to the commission to present, and the public could, could take, you know, to participate or to at least be able to hear what they have to say on what they're, what they will do for the City of Harlingen.
We can do that. We'll go out for proposals and get some companies to come in, and then we'll give them to the council, too. So you can rank them yourselves. We're going to do that.
You don't need a motion, right?
Yes, we do.
Oh, motion to solicit proposals?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And item number sixteen, board appointments.
I have Mike Gonzalez to the Community Improvement Board.
I have none, mayor.
I have one on the Airport Board. I have seat seven, and I would like, because it's a new thing on the, so do I, there's someone there right now, so do I have to remove him first and then put him on?
Correct.
Okay, then I make a motion, well, I would like to remove Mr. Rubiano from seat seven on the Airport Board, and then I would like to appoint Juan Longoria to replace him.
I think you have to do one at a time.
Okay. Okay, so I make a motion to remove Mr. Rubiano from the Airport Board.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oppose.
Motion carries.
Okay, now I make a motion to appoint Juan Longoria to the Airport Board in seat seven.
Second.
And we also have Mr.
Mike Gonzalez.
Mike Gonzalez.
Mike Gonzalez to the Community Improvement Board.
And I do have some appointments. I have for Healthy Harlingen.
You're putting me on a board?
Healthy Harlingen, we have Roger Mesa, the Harlingen Housing Authority, Irma Peña, and Bettina Elliott.
I have one more. I almost forgot. On the Veteran Advisory Board, I was going to replace, well, make a motion to replace Martin, Martín Borjas, and I was going to replace him with.
Is that an expired term?
No.
Okay.
Segura, Javier.
Ruben Javier?
Yes, Javier Segura, yes.
I think we're gonna, we're checking as far as the qualifications on that, sir, just to make sure that he's a Harlingen resident.
Okay, okay, so hold off on that one?
Yeah. Well, you can appoint him, but, yeah, you can appoint him, but if we come back and we tell you that he doesn't meet.
I just take him off.
Yes.
Okay, then I'll appoint him now.
So, what, were you gonna remove somebody first?
Yeah, you're gonna make the motion first.
Borjas.
Okay.
He did, go ahead.
Make a motion to remove Martín Borjas from the Veteran Advisory Board.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'm.
Board appointments?
Okay.
Go ahead.
You want me to say all mine again?
Yes.
No, we have every, we have Mr. Gonzalez.
Mike, Mike Gonzalez to the Movement Board.
Okay, and then you got Juan Longoria for the airport board, correct? Okay.
Yes.
And then, then Mr. Javier Segura for the Veteran Advisory.
Second.
And then the mayor's appointment?
I have Roger Mesa for Healthy Harlingen, and the Harlingen Housing Authority, Irma Peña, and Bettina Elliott. What was the last one, Christina? Do you have a motion?
Yeah.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, item number seventeen is to go into executive session to deliberate regarding the purchase or exchange lease or value of real property pursuant to the Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven two. Do we have a motion to go into executive?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we are gonna go into executive session, and we will be back shortly.
Is it recording voice? My watch is already done.
All right, we are back in session, it is eight ten PM, after just, after being in executive session, and we are now at item number eighteen, discussion and possible action regarding the executive session, item pursuant to Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven two. And, and we're just not gonna take any action on this item, we're gonna pass on it. Thank you all for bearing with us, and everybody have a good evening. This meeting is adjourned.